At 6:00 PM. Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Kennedy City Council for January 12, 2021. I'm glad to see we have a good turnout tonight, and thank you all for coming this evening. I will call the regular city council meeting to order at this time. Is there a quorum present this evening? There's a quorum present. Before we move to item number three on the agenda, which is the prayer, I would like to ask the audience to stand, to rise while we observe a moment of silence for the events that happened at the United States Capitol on January 6th, 2021. Thank you. You could remain standing. Leslie Nguyen, if you would lead us in prayer.
Oh heavenly Father, we come to you this afternoon, and we ask that you would continue to watch over us, continue to deliver us, and continue to help us to see that the direction that you would have us to travel is the direction we need to be traveling. Help us to not get caught up in all the things that are going on all around us, and help us to focus on our neighbors and the folks that we can make a difference for. Allow us to use the knowledge and the wisdom that you've given us to better serve this community. Help us to understand the things that we're working on, and help us to do what's best for the city of Kennedy. In your son's name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is number five, citizen comments, and we have one citizen who signed up for citizen comments. If Mallory Deason could come forward at this time.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mallory Deason. I've been in the Kennedy Fire Department for about a year and a half now. I've been a firefighter for 15 years with South Hill Fire Department. I've also been a firefighter instructor for the last 13 years in the medical department. It has come to our attention that there's been some things that are concerning for us at the department at this time. One of them is going to the paid fire department, and a few other things that I'd like to try to quite quickly get on is to spot our concerns on what's going on. One of the first ones that I find quite odd for me is the fact that our fire chief does not have his truck where he has access to it at his home, where he can be able to go to the fires directly from his home to the fire, so that he can let us know what we need and what's going on, so that when we get there, we're not taking my surprise. If you guys leave this home, go to the department, they go out to the fire by that time, we're leaving too, so we don't know what we're going into, and that is a huge safety risk for us. The more we know before we get there, the better off we are, and that's very concerning. A case in point, we know the fire chief has a staple at his home. He wants to go straight to the fire. Save the little girl. Save her life. If he even had to go to the station, get his vehicle, and then turn around and go to the fire, she would go all the way to family. So it's very imperative that he needs to have his truck. I've not ever been in any city where the fire chief did not have their designated vehicle at their home, ready to go, so that they can go to the fires. Second thing is, is on the paid fire department and fire department. Just quickly, basically, on average, for a chief, it's $75,000 to $80,000 a year. Assistant chief is $65,000 to $70,000 a year, and just a fire fighter is $50,000 to $55,000 a year. That's $530,000, do you think, in just salaries alone? That's not including electricity, building, anything else that might be concerned, or that you're gonna have to pay for to house them and everything else. Just with a thought on that one. It also came to our notice that access is banned for firefighters, where they live, because it was told us that anybody that would live out of city limits didn't need to be a firefighter. If you do that, that cuts down on our manpower a lot, and that's not a good thing, because that risks us. It risks us, because then we don't have enough manpower. We're in a big fire. We're starting a big fire, and we need relief. We need that extra manpower. We need those people that are trained to do what they need to do, and learn to get the job done, and hopefully save lives and property. Other thoughts? The motto of the fire department is, "Everybody goes home. Everybody goes home." Sorry.
Would entertain a motion to extend our time if anybody would be willing?
I'll make a motion that we extend our time.
I'm almost done, I promise.
No, it's statutory.
I'm sorry?
It's statutory.
I'm not sure what you mean.
It's written by code. It's in the code, three minutes.
I read the ordinance, and it says a majority vote of the council can extend the time of a public speaker. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll give a second.
Motion is second. If you can call the roll for the vote, please.
Counsel Douglas.
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez. Counsel Stevens.
Yes.
Counsel Breonna. Counsel Lynn.
Opposed.
Please continue. Majority vote, four to one. Please continue.
Some of us are firefighters themselves. It's one of the brothers, sisters, and the department across the world. Some call us crazy, others call us heroes. None of us would have put in the time or effort that we have. I can't express it enough, the level of compassion we have for what we do is a brother, sister, and for us all. Because of our determination to do what we do, to invest our abilities, we put in an average of 144 hours per year training that doesn't include calls, prayers, or other extra events that we have within the community. It's hard for us to put in towards how we feel and how devoted we are to what we do, but I can express it enough for those that have had it in our shoes to know that it's in our hearts, "Everyone goes home." My personal opinion is that our fire department is being targeted. Why I don't know. We are operating according to NPA, OSHA, state, and federal laws. Everything we do is done as a department, whether it has to do with finances, phone calls, or training. This department is very transparent, and it can start to do this no matter what they own. This is just a thought, but ask yourselves, why are we coming under the markers of all of a setting, and what the voters are behind these actions? Last thing is communication. It seems that basically, no one is communicating directly with our fire chief. I don't know why. At this point in time, I obviously don't care, but it needs to be basically out of respect, communicate with him instead of communicating to three other people who work at Star Chief. He is our leader. He is our boss at our fire department. He is the one that lends us what we need to do and how we need to do it. I have a great respect for the man, because he has been in the fire department for many years. I would follow that man into any battle, any day of the week. Thank you for your comments, Ms. Deason, and thank you for your service to this community as part of the Kennedy Volunteer Fire Department. We really appreciate it.
We cannot directly respond to your comments at this time, but Mr. Lynn, I would like to direct you to place an item on the agenda for the February meeting of the city council. Issues of, sorry, consideration and possible action in regard to issues of concern to the Kennedy Volunteer Fire Department. Are there any other public comments this evening? If not, we'll move along to departmental reports, and the first departmental report listed is Public Works. Is there a city staff person here to present this report? Yes, sir. Thank you. Come forward. Mr. Lynn, is there a microphone he can use or?
There is, right underneath there.
I'm probably heard it loud.
Okay. Either way, whatever you're comfortable with.
If you can't hear me, I'll try to, but. Good afternoon, council, mayor. My name is Jerry Higgins. I'm the Public Works Director of the city, for those of you that do not know me. I'll start off with just a few items here. On the water side, we produce 42.6 million gallons of water from the Mont of Deason. Our water loss was 1.3 million gallons, which is 3.85%. So that's pretty good, though. Our wastewater treatment plant flows, we, was 35.7 million that went through. We had 1.13 inches of rain from the Mont. Our distribution collection, our field guys that work out in the field every day, streets and all of them, we've done, we've done a total of 1,311 service orders for the Mont. According to our water usage, we are still way below our average for our water restrictions, so I still recommend that we stay in stage two. We're doing really well. The winter months, it always tends to slow down on the water usage. We have several projects going on right now, not as many as we had. We've wrapped up some, some we're still working on. A few may go, most of you, we've been working off of Con Street quite a bit over the past couple of months. It's one of those projects where everything that can go wrong does go wrong. We started out replacing the sewer line on that street, because we were having so many issues with sewer backups, line collapsing, and this first one thing, and notes, we started replacing that, and then in the process, we find that our water line is a two-inch galvanized pipe, some of it PVC, and it was crossing the sewer line. It was zigzagging, just all over the place through the road, and so to try to get it into regulations, and it was leaking quite a bit also, it had a lot of leaks on it, we decided to go ahead and replace the water line also, and to get it in more of a compliance and a safety issue there, and the way we worked on that line, it kind of caused some problems. Like I say, when things kind of go wrong, they will. That road is only inclined, and when you fix sewer lines, you dig them up, you can't shut the sewer off so that it flows down the ditch, so your ditch stays wet the whole time you're working on it. So this makes your ditch stay wetter than normal for longer periods of time, and the water main was also leaking periodically during this, while we were replacing, so our ditching lines had stayed wetter longer than normal. Even with proper backfill, because you can't get all the sewer water out of the ditches, it takes longer for them to dry up. So I understand the citizens over there, they've got a mess, but this street is just a mess, but last couple of weeks ago, we went in, we dug back out, all the wet stuff that we could, put it back in fresh fill, mixed it with concrete, give it some stabilization. That seemed to hold up pretty good until then we were called off. I called my crews off. I put everybody changing out meters. We had that little rain Sunday, so that got us back into a mess, but we had that scheduled to, we've been working over the past couple of days, cleaning it, trying to dry it up some more, and we've scheduled, probably within the next couple of weeks or within two weeks, we'll have a crew come in, and they're gonna clean that up a little better and re-aspoff that street, and then when they, they're gonna do pulling at the same time, so as soon as they get through it to Con, they're gonna go over to pulling. They should have that finished by then, where they can do the asphalt there at the same time, that'd save us some mobilization fees. And again, this has a lot to do with the weather, but for those of you that don't know, it's hard to lay asphalt this time of the year because of the ambient temperature, has to be above 53 degrees and so forth to get a good result, so we're gonna be keeping an eye on the weather and try to get that in there on that. So that's kind of where we are with the Con, and then I've brought a meter with us here that I've got up here by the mayor. It's basically what we're putting in and changing out right now, for both of you, if I want to look at it later on. Some meters, we're changing out the complete unit, which is right there. Some we're just changing the head, and some we're changing the head and the end port. The end port is what sends out the signal, that if you'll notice any of you, that we've been to your house already, there's a hole in your box with a little black button sticking out of it, and that sends a signal up to a cloud, these are read through a cloud, and basically an AMI meter reading system, so they'll be able to be read from the office or from your smartphone. You can keep an eye on it from your smartphone or your computer by downloading the app. We started that with approximately 1,640 meters. Those of you that was on the council a few months ago, when I came up, made a presentation, Mr. Lynn and I, to sell you on this upgrade because of the other one being phased out and obsolete. This is the meter that we're changing out to make it to where makes all this possible. We started out again with around 1,640 meters. At date, we've replaced around 800 and some odd. We've basically a little over halfway through. We hope to have, we were shooting for a goal for the 14th of this month. We're gonna miss it by probably four or five days. I apologize for that. Up until two weeks ago, or around the 5th of the month, I only had about six guys working on the field crew. We were hit pretty hard with COVID. A lot of guys were out with COVID. Then, of course, you know, we had the holidays, a lot of people was out on vacation, so we just got back to full staff running. One day last week, so I've had like eight crews, two men to a crew going out, putting these in. I pulled the street people, so again, I need to help, so I apologize for not having them out there on the streets, but I'm trying to get all the help I can get to get these things put in. But since we're at a point where we are now, we have kind of gone back, but I still have five crews a day working on putting these meters in, and like I say, I hope to have these changed out where people can keep up with their own readings, their own usage, their own meters, and hopefully that will eliminate a lot of things, or help them keep up with their usage, notify them when they have leaks, you know, so it will benefit us, but it will also benefit the citizens as well, and the customers, and that's all I have, and if you have any questions.
Does the council have any questions for Mr. Higgins?
I do have one question. Are we providing documentation to the homeowners and residents on the app and how to download it, how to set it up, things like that?
Not yet. We have notified and sent out some flyers. We do have those on hand, but right now, we're just trying to get these meters changed out, because even once they're changed out, it takes a day or two for the ladies in city houses to enter all of these things. I mean, they've been working long hours. Now, it's hard on us changing them out, but they have to go into the computer and change everything, sign everybody up, and to get it, and sometimes, you know, a lot of most things, it takes two to three days to get in the system before they'll even, you know, be able to access the app. So once that's done, we can get this put on Facebook or the website, send out flyers, whatever the case may be, and then they can either call city hall if they don't understand it, and the ladies can walk them through it. It's still new to them too, so please bear with everybody doing this, but it's really pretty simple. It's user-friendly on your phone, and, you know, if you have a leak, it'll send you an email or text message, depends on how you set up your app, and lets you know, but, and it's like a .1 tenth of a gallon, but again, a leak, it will only tell you that you have a leak if this meter continuously flows for 24 hours. So you may use quite a bit of water, but it's not gonna tell you, you know, because it doesn't know unless that meter continually runs for 24 hours. So, but still, a lot of people go all month before they get their bill. By the time they get their bill, we're a month and a half, you know, down the road, and it's still hard to go back then and say, so this will help us, it will help them, and we'll get that information real quick if we can, once we do this, and we may start trying to get some of that information out prior to getting them all changed out. We can do that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Mr. Higgins, thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is Police Chief Report. Chief Ash, if you could come forward.
Mr. Aaron, thank you. For the month of September. Starting off with my animal control, we still have one, our officer's out on baby leave, he's back for a week or two, so we just have one guy right now. We did have our state inspection, so the state came out to inspect the shelter for nature of our climate, shelter, and all the rules. They did tell us that we needed to paint all of our concrete, which is something new against newer regulations, but so early and mostly haven't been out there and getting all the concrete painted, also painted over all the, any of the rest, if there's rust spots anywhere, they have to be painted over as well, so. The work on that is, I think we're just about done with that, then we'll be re-inspected, and we should be good there. For our police department, I have added in the package that we completed. One of them did my 2020 program ratio profiling report, which is part I have to do once every year. I have to send to the state, and I'm also required to do it to you, so it's attached in the package there. I also attached along with in that package, maybe through breakdown, rate of breakdown of Corinth County, so you can kind of get a feel of how it compares to the county. Going through the numbers, it looks, I didn't see anything that popped out at me. Everything seems to be fairly close to where they should be. There's always a, you know, a point here, a point there, but everything seems to be pretty close to it. This is something new, the ratio profiling this year, they wanted us to add county breakdown as well, so you can see that, so you have a better idea of what it looks like. I don't use the city of Kennedy breakdown, I use Corinth County, because so many, you know, everybody's backed and supported by the county, so we deal with a lot of people who go out to county. I also added in there a copy of our annual survey that I do. This is something that we started, we did last year. Comes from our recognition program, it's also something good for us to have. It's a very non-scientific Facebook poll. I did it last year, and the council asked me to present it, which the council asked me, so I'm gonna have it brought to you again this year. We had a total of 81 respondents this year, 89 last year, so the numbers are fairly comparable. If you look through this, you can see I gave last year's numbers and this number, just simply 10 questions. Everything under looked like it was going up. People who say they trust the police department has gone up. People who say they approve the police department has gone up. The interesting number that I found, the most interesting one, is the number of people who said they actually had contact with police officers this year, like 25% last year, and over 70% this year. Our officers are actually talking to people who are making more contact with them, which is actually very good, so. But that's in there, if you want to see that, we do have to do that, except it's a requirement for our recognition program, so we had brought it to you to pack that as well. We are still on track for next month to have our inspectors come down to the recognition inspection, since February 10th and 11th, the day after the council meeting next month. Hopefully, when they're done with that, we will be complete, we'll become a recognized agency in the state, which has been about a two-year project we've been working on, so hopefully we'll be able to do it here first. I'll try to keep it a little shorter this week, so if you have any questions.
Are there any questions from the council for Chief Ash?
I have a couple of questions. One question, which rescue group are we using to, like, for the five dogs that went to rescue group? Where do they go?
They go to the Corinth County Canadian organization, and then they, they then send it out to where they sent them.
And is KCHO the only one that we're using?
Yes.
Okay. My other question is, with extreme cold as of late, are the officers doing anything regarding the statute and the Health and Safety Code regarding dogs chained up outside?
So the, you are required to provide, they can be outside, they have to have shelter, food, water, those kinds of things, so our animal control can respond to any complaints on that. The way our ordinance is written in the state law too, they can be outside, they just have to have shelter, so yes, they will respond to any complaints.
All right. So I have.
Any other questions from the council? I have one, Chief Ash, just kind of jumped out at me when I was reviewing this in the packet. For citations, I noticed for the month of April, there were 67 issued. For the month of August, 638, and it just seemed like a broad disparity. I was wondering if it might have been COVID-related, because it's about the same time that COVID came along.
Citations?
Citations, yeah, April versus August. Wide range there.
I don't know, April was extremely low. I don't know, maybe I have to wait and check. Maybe it's a typo.
Okay.
Our normal number runs 300, 350, something like that for a month, so I'll double check.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate your time. Number seven on the agenda is the city manager report, and the first is departmental reports. Mr. Lynn, if you could come forward.
Yeah, so with the city secretary hanging out, and we're giving some reports you don't want to give, essentially, we have four new hires in December, we have one in the nation. One of the key things that needs to be said, or the city secretary's portion, is that tomorrow, Wednesday, January 13th, 2021, is the first day for anyone wishing to submit an application for a place on the ballot for the upcoming May 1st election. Friday, February 12th, 2021, at exactly 5:00 PM, is the last date to submit an application for anyone wishing to buy for a place on the ballot. For those who are curious, we have three council seats, up one, three, five. The fire department reports that they responded to five calls, one vehicle wreck, two grass brush fires, and a pump fire, and then they assisted EMS with a lift. Code enforcement issued one stop work order at $321, eight residential building permits. That breakdown is one general contractor, three plumber for electrical. They issued three commercial building permits, the two general contractor, and one plumber. And Bureau of Air Task performed seven total inspections. They issued three commercial building permits, ten general contractor, and one plumber. And Bureau Veritas performed seven total inspections. Four residential gas, two residential plumbing routes, and one commercial electric. There were ten violations issued, we assert by mail. There were cert, there was violations for, almost for a public nuisance and abandoned vehicle. Eight was a litter control, high lead, crashed truck. And one was complaining of zoning and regulations for RVs. City court saw roughly about 120 defendants and collected a gross total of $25,100 of the net to the city of $18,200. Okay. One other thing I need to add, the code report. It has come to my attention that the city of Kennedy was not handling the building permit applications correctly. They were just passing on building permits to anybody who would just fill it out. As of December, there's a $30 fee. You must, if you are doing active building of over 100 square foot, scale drawings must be accompanied to the building permit. What that means is no more drawing on a piece of paper, no more drawing on a napkin. I need to be able to take, or Bureau Veritas needs to be able to take an architect's scale and match it up with what is on paper. It needs to match perfectly. So scale drawings. We're also going to be sending all plans that come in to Bureau Veritas to plan reviews. So when a person comes in with plans, they're going to have to pay for a building permit, any NEPs, which is mechanical, electrical, and plumbing inspections, as well as having a plan review. Upfront, you're going to give them a building permit. No building permits will be issued in the city of Kennedy on any plans without being reviewed by Bureau Veritas. So we need to make sure that we understand that and that that's put out there. That is for the safety of the residents, and that is to make sure that things are being built. Two codes. Right now Bureau Veritas is our company that we are still using, coming in doing all our inspections, and they have final say on what those who are not going to do the inspection. So just make sure we're out there with that. So on those several departments, anybody have any questions or want to ask?
Any questions for Mr. Lynn on those departments? I have one, Mr. Lynn. I had a resident contact me regarding code compliance, and is it still the case that if you own your own home in the city of Kennedy, you can do your own plumbing work without being licensed?
You can still do your plumbing as long as you're not doing major plumbing.
So it depends on the scope of the work, then?
Depends upon the scope of the work. So it's a pretty, it's a pretty good idea just to come down to City Hall, let us look and see what you're doing, and we'll tell you what you can do and can't do. That way, you know.
And is a permit required?
A permit is still required, yes.
For any plumbing work, or just depending on the scope?
We need to have a permit for that.
So if my toilet breaks, I'm going to have to get a permit?
If toilet breaks, theoretically, yes, you're supposed to.
Okay. I didn't know that.
Okay. Just come to this.
Thank you for the information.
Any other questions?
I just have one. Are those fees going to be posted where our residents can see what the fees are?
Yes. They will be very clearly posted. As a matter of fact, at the February meeting, we will be going over the entire fee schedule as long as we can.
Are we still on track for March for the new website to be up and running?
I will get to that maybe on.
Okay.
Any other questions regarding those departments, probably the city manager portion? Very good. Okay, so the city auditor, the sensitivity schedule will be here tomorrow. We'll be here for a couple of days, perform our annual fiscal audit for the fiscal year 1920. So they will be coming into town. So the auditor will be selected, will be maybe reaching out to some of the new councilors that were here last year to do their interview and so just be expecting that. In addition to that, residents could probably start respecting the letters soon to come out from the auditor. Those letters are just, you know, verifications of what the auditor finds in our system. They're not being audited. That's a key thing for residents to understand. They are not being audited. They just need to more or less say, yes, this is it at this time, and send it back to the auditor, who's willing to not come back to City Hall and restrict the officer. So those motions are coming out soon as well. To answer your question, the new website, Mr. Drew has worked very diligently with us. I had him place our website under construction, mainly because there was no way we could update it, and I could not see the benefit from having a website that was up for people to access, that was outdated when I'm working on a new website. So if you go to the city of Kennedy website, it should say under construction for that reason. Mr. Drew has run into numerous roadblocks with our former person. He has more or less attempted to hold the city hostage times by not giving Mr. Drew requested information regarding our IP address. So we're still trying to work with him, but Mr. Drew and I have a plan to go a different direction if he wants to operate, which will involve potential change of IP address. And I personally like the IP address that I'm looking at changing to. It's more suited for this palette rather than the one we have. So just know we are working on that. And yes, Mayor, that is why we're trying to get the state up and running. Now, I will say, Mr. Drew is working behind the scenes. He owns sole editing properties to his website while it's not in construction, and he has done some things already for me on it. So what we'll do is we'll do everything taken care of. Mr. Drew will populate it, force it, get it set up, and we'll launch it. And when we launch it, it should have all of our councilor's names and their email addresses, as well as the mayor's email address, and the mayor's city-owned phone to go with it, as well as the city manager and city secretary's email addresses in the appropriate places there, and then along the items that I want on for transfers. So we will be handling that.
Does the city still have access to the domain and ownership of the domain? So there's a possibility we may have to change domain names?
Yes.
Okay.
The main thing that we change is the, we have to go with maybe, we can go with the top gov part, but it will cost us $400 a year, which I personally like that idea. And then there's another one that doesn't cost us anything, it's a little more lengthy, but it is still appropriate for cities, CI top, Kennedy, Texas. So we're looking at a couple of those. As many of you know, we are working on a GLO grant. I actually worked on two of them. One is for trainings within the city, and the other is for the water transmission line. I spoke to Ms. Leinberg, and she has informed me that the federal government has pushed back the story of those GLO grant applications until March. So I have partnered with Ms. Leinberg, and we are fixing to push forward for the grants, the loan programs, through the Texas Development Water Board, and the USDA. So we're going to push forward on alternate funding for the water line, these other two things. So if we get it, then that'll just be extra funds, and we are. East Main Project is still moving forward, but it has slow times to attach it and bid it out. And what happened was the engineers had to quantify the costs. The person who bid, we only had one to get to bid, and the bid came in there three times. The engineers had to quantify the costs to do this project, so we're rebidding it out. There was no way. We were just going to write a check for what that bid was without doing it a second time to see what other people were going to bring in. So you'll be seeing that building out, so we will remove that. An update on the well project. The bad sites are currently under construction. It will take approximately two weeks for them to be completed. Then we have a target date also of January 25th for them to mobilize the drilling equipment. Now, one of the things we're doing is we have another, a well, it's called a supply well for the rig. They did go and they did take care of that well, and it has gained the permit from the Evergreen Underwater Conservation District. So that's all good to go. So the rig is brought in, put together, we'll have that well, we can use that water. That way, they're not running all the way back into Kennedy to get water, to take all the way back up to the area to use water for the drilling and all that kind of stuff. It was kind of appealing. The particular gentleman who owns the land we're leasing from, he was all in favor of doing this, so we covered all of our bases there as well. So there's all of that. Any questions on those? Very good. Moving on to the financial portion. I did give you all the spreadsheet, so we can go down through the spreadsheet. We start with our available liquidity on the left-hand side. Our money and our tax accounts. We have 9.716 million roughly, comprised of 4.1 million in the general fund, 2.2 million in the hotel motel tax fund, 853,000 in water sewer fund, and 2.4 million in the payday fund. As of the other day, we had 2.8 million in cash in the bank. That gives us a total of available liquidity of 12.5 million dollars, which is roughly just about eight months' worth of expenses. So we're right in that sweet spot right there with the expenses. It is six months. Revenue for the period, the general fund took in 624,000, water sewer took in 575,000, and since we were reporting for the month of December, that would be better than the rest of our budget, which leaves about a quarter of the way to our fiscal budget, or 25%. General fund is underperforming its budget at 13.8% revenue, whereas the water is outperforming its budget at 28.4%, and overall, the city is underperforming at 19.65%. Keep in mind also on revenues, that we are headed into January, January 15th is when people start to start paying their property taxes in bulk. January, February, and March are usually, I mean, this is how these key months for revenue generation of property taxes. So as we start seeing those, then we should start seeing a 25% drop. So there's that. The expenditures is, the general fund spent 1.52 million, and the water sewer has spent 442,000. Again, we're trying to pay it at 25%, so overall, for the year-to-date, we are way underperforming the expenditures in the general fund, but that's due to the land purchases and then the direct tie just to those land purchases. If we back out the land purchases, we are outperforming this budget. The water sewer is outperforming its budget on the expenditures, and then of course, the combination for the year, for the two, we are underperforming. So we're in very good, we're in very good shape on these. Any questions?
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Item A, City Council meetings, City Council minutes. Item B, approved financials. I would entertain a motion regarding the consent agenda.
Make a motion. I'll make a motion we approve the consent agenda, item A, City Council minutes, and item B, approved financials.
We have a second? A second from Mr. Wynn.
Second from Mr. Wynn.
It was Myers. He was, I was spending a second, but Myers, he said it.
Okay.
So, but it doesn't matter. We got a second.
I got it done, Councilman.
Okay. Mr. Lynn, if you could call the rule?
Yes, sir. Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Sayes?
Yes.
Councilor Brianna?
Yes.
Councilor Wynn?
Yes.
All in favor, let me know.
Next item is ordinance resolution, other action items. This section shall provide for all other official discussion and action items provided for consideration by the council. Item number nine, consideration and possible action in regard to Resolution 20-33, a resolution confirming support to the proposed Town Oak Apartments located at 120 Water Street for construction of affordable rental housing in the city of Kennedy. And this is an item that was carried over from the December 8th, 2020 meeting. Do we have a presentation on this item? If you could come forward, please. If you could state your name for the record.
My name is Robert Meyer, and I'm with Oxford County. We represent the Town of Development. My associate Justin was here last month, and he had a voice company in the sun tonight, so. At X, he saved it last month. This is a re-ambulation of the Town of Development, and we are requesting support from the city council for application to the police department housing and community affairs. That last month's meeting, the council requested some additional information, mainly support from the residents. And we went out and talked to residents, we gave them the stroke of work, basically, of what was happening with the development, our safety protocols, and what we were doing, and asked for their support. And we provided that, a petition from the residents. We weren't able to meet with, you believe, all of the residents, because they were unavailable at the time we were there. But we did get, and there's 48 units there, we were able to get 40 boards. So we do have that. We were able to provide the information to copy of the safety protocols and the instructions. If there's any other questions, I'd like to.
Would entertain a motion for consideration of this item?
I'll make a motion that we consider Agenda Item Nine.
Is there a second?
And I'll second that.
Motion and second. Council, do you have any questions?
I do have one question. The, in our packet, the PowerPoint slides, is this what y'all presented to the residents? Like the same?
They did a pre, you know, they, I'm not exactly sure. They didn't get a copy of the, what they gave, what they got was a copy of our letter the tenant, you know, filled out about the re-ambulation, and then they got a copy of the relocation plan, and the safety protocol, this is like a protocol that will go on. And then that's the information.
Okay. So all of the residents that signed, they are agreeing to y'all's plan, your proposal, everything that y'all plan to do?
That's true.
All right? That's all I have.
Any other questions from the council? There being no further questions or discussion, I would entertain a motion regarding this item?
I'm going to make a motion that we take action on this item in Resolution 20-33, confirming support to propose Town Oak Apartment located at 120 Water Street for construction of affordable rental housing in the city of Kennedy.
I'll second.
If we have a motion and second, Mr. Lynn, if you could call the rule?
Councilor Douglas?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Sayes?
Yes.
Councilor Brianna?
Yes.
Councilor Wynn?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. Thank you for your time and good luck with your project. Item number 10, presentation, discussion, and possible action in regard to the tax credit application process for the Kennedy Housing Authority. We have a presentation, forgive me if I'm mispronouncing this, Kristi Leguennes?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Baker, council, council members. I'm Kristi Leguennes. Most of you kind of know me probably as Kristi Baskerville from years ago, but I've been Leguennes for quite a while now. So it's really funny that they were just here. So it's really funny that they were just here. I can't tell you how important, and I'm not here to ask for approval of a resolution, I just kind of want to have a dialogue, and I will be putting before you next month pretty much the exact same resolution that you guys just saw for Town Oaks. We may be a little more ahead of the game, we've actually already canvassed all of our program participants about the revitalization, the rehabilitation of the Kennedy Housing Authority. That property was built in 1956, 1957. The property in Karnes City was built in 1964. As you can imagine, the federal government gives us tons of money, we have all this money just to blow, and, you know, make all of these rehabs and modernizations to organize, and it's not, not the case, unfortunately. So we have failing infrastructure. We've, you know, put a lot of money into the Housing Authority. I know since 1996, when I started working at the Housing Authority, we've put in over $6 million, and we have just been afforded units in Kennedy, but it's just not enough to keep up with collapsing play lines and, you know, the PVC copper lines that are failing. It's all construction. So we are actually going through a couple of different methods, and I just kind of want to let y'all know what HUD is looking at and entertaining. Our property is a little different than Town Oaks, and we're funded through a different line of funding. We do receive what is called an operating subsidy from the federal government, and we receive what's called capital money from the federal government through HUD, and then we receive our rents. Unfortunately, those dollar amounts added together just aren't enough, I'm going to say, to keep floating the boat and keeping us COVID compliant. So HUD recognizes that they have about $8 billion in capital needs through all of their public housing nationwide, and HUD, as the agency, HUD's wanting to get out of the public housing game. They would like to no longer fund public housing. They, you know, it's, it's a good story, it hasn't happened yet. I just lost Sydney's expression. It really doesn't happen yet, so they're giving us a method, because right now, as a housing authority, we're completely crippled in that we are not able to go to a bank and say, hey, I need a loan for $400,000. We are prohibited from leveraging our property for financing. So HUD has put forth a method, it's called a disposition application. We are in the process of submitting a disposition application, and basically, what it means is we are going to dispose of the public housing property to the Kennedy nonprofit, and through that method, we are going to get project-based vouchers. And it's really, it's a good thing for the residents, and like I said, we've already done the resident meetings and discussed this with everybody. It is a voluntary conversion. As we go through this voluntary conversion, we are also submitting an application for tax credits. So we have submitted the pre-application for tax credits, it was due last week, and so next month, I will be coming to you guys for support for a tax credit application. We are hoping to, currently between Kennedy and Karnes City, some of you may know, some of you may not, but in 2006, we started running the Karnes City Housing Authority because it was financially troubled. In 2011, the Kennedy Housing Authority actually absorbed the Karnes City Housing Authority, so we now have the Kennedy Housing Authority, 72 units of public housing, 40 of those are located in Kennedy, 32 are located in Karnes City. It is our hope to come back and rebuild a property that actually meets the needs of our community now. Our community, as it was back in 1950s, was, I'm going to say maybe more family-oriented. So as an example, in Kennedy, I had two one-bedroom apartments. So I've had elderly, single people persons on our application since I've on our waiting list, since I worked at the Housing Authority since 1996. They're never going to get assisted, we just only have the one bedrooms. However, we've got four-bedroom apartments that we don't have enough applications for. So it's our, our hope through the tax credit process to rebuild units that actually match the census of what we have now in Karnes County, in Kennedy, and in Karnes City. So that's really all I wanted to talk to y'all about. I just want to let you know, where do you hear? We have a mission, we do really well as a housing authority, but we've got, we've got some big plans. Also, as the Kennedy Housing Authority, we do do some things that other housing authorities don't. We actually, outside of Karnes City, which is now part of Kennedy, we do manage seven other housing authorities. So we manage the Sherpas Housing Authority, Three Rivers Smiley, Nixon, Ball City, Yerem. So we get to work with a lot of different city councils, a lot of different communities. But I would just tell you, as a housing authority, we're recognized as being very good at what we do. So if there are any questions.
Any questions from the council?
I just have one. So are you actually looking to rebuild these?
We are.
Like, at the same place, or somewhere else?
So, and Mr. Lynn and I have had a couple of conversations about maybe some options of property in town, maybe I've had some, well, so we have the acreage that we, we do want to rebuild. We, I recognize, I don't know if anybody, if y'all have ever been, I know Johnny's been in some of our units, because we've had some serious sewer line issues out there way in the past, but, you know, it's a simple, there's sort of a lot of buildings, and they're, I kind of, there's nothing marketable about them. And I recognize that, you know, we need affordable housing in this, this area. If you guys don't understand that, I'm right down here, 124 West Main, I will fill your ears with, with the need that we have in this community, especially with the, the rents that never come back down to affordable measure. But I really am looking at, council number science, we are really looking at rebuilding what meets our needs now.
Right.
Which is not four-bedroom units, it's more one-bedroom units for our elderly disabled. It's two-bedroom units for the mom with two kids, you know, so three-bedroom. So yes, we are wanting to rebuild. Altogether, we have 72 units, I'm hoping to rebuild 80, and that's not all in Kennedy, that's between Karnes City and Kennedy, but we would like to rebuild about eight market rent units for the, for the community, for affordable rents.
Sounds exciting.
Yeah, we're excited.
Good.
Any other questions? If not, thank you for the presentation, and good luck with all this. We'd love to see affordable housing in Kennedy. Absolutely. Next item on the agenda is number 11, consideration and possible action in regard to increasing the scope of the city auditor to include a financial audit of the fire department's separate books and bank account held at Karnes County Bank under the city of Kennedy's FEIN. The presenter for this is City Manager Lynn. City Manager Lynn, if you could come forward.
Counsel Mayor, one of the issues that I had, well, you say it like this, around March 17th, I met then-City Attorney, Valtter Ruez in the hallway, I'm here at City Hall. Mr. Ruez and myself convened over to the conference room, there's the library, and we spent about three hours discussing all the issues of the city of Kennedy, and all the issues he was having. One of the issues Mr. Ruez was having was with the city of Kennedy Fire Department, we'll get more into that at a later date, but that is where this particular line item comes from. It comes from a conversation with the then-city attorney about things happening within the city of Kennedy. Since I was handed that by the city attorney, I have begun a long process with team members here helping me out here and there to go through things, try to do diligence to figure out what's going on, where are we at, and things of that nature. What I, one of the things I've discovered is that the city of Kennedy Fire Department has a set of books separate from the budget that the council approves every year. It is a set of quick books that they keep on PC in their office. It is linked to a bank account, Karnes County National Bank, and the city of Kennedy's FEIN number is the FEIN number on that bank account. Since the city of Kennedy's FEIN number is on that, the first thing I did was I went through the minutes to see if the city of Kennedy ever authorized the fire department to use that number to open a bank account. No such minutes exist. The issue I have with this is very simple. It doesn't matter whether this fire department is a volunteer fire department, a paid fire department, or a hired fire department. What matters is they use public funds to purchase things. Those who have attended the Public Funds Investment Act know there's just kind of laws regular. If an individual wishes to be volunteer, there must be a 501(c)(3). To be a 501(c)(3), you have to have a clean set of books, you have to have an audit to go with that. I reached out to Chief Wong the other day via text message to his chief's phone. As of tonight, she formed an reply, and I asked for the most recent copies of all the audits that the city of Kennedy Fire Department had, and who did their audit, and who the last audit was. Prior to writing the agenda, nothing. So it's on the agenda tonight, so that the city council can decide if they wish to expand the scope of our audit, we'll be here this week, to audit the books of the city of Kennedy Fire Department. This would be a start to helping them get to whatever it is they want, whatever the city council wants for them. However, the cost of that is going to be an additional $4,000 to $5,000 dollars to the already approved amount of the city's audit.
We need a motion now, Ryan.
To discuss it?
Yeah, can I get a motion to discuss it?
I'm making a motion that we discuss Item 11 on the agenda.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and second. I have one question. Does the city have an auditor, or is this a contracted auditor?
Well, Mr. Mayor, it's going to be contagious to talk. It's the city auditor. He's bound to the city by PSA, just like the city attorney is bound by PSA. So if we go down one road, say he's not the city auditor, technically, she's not the city attorney. They are both linked to the city the same way. It is the people that the city council have chosen to represent the city in doing the books, and therefore, they are the city auditor.
And this account that is, has the city of Kennedy FEIN number, if that account exists, it should be audited by this, and it's, it's a city account, and that number is what everything is turned into, the IRS is based on that number. So if we have an account at a bank with that number tied to it, that information goes to the federal government, and if we don't know what's going on with it, that's not a good place for us to be, and it should be audited.
Has it ever been audited?
Not since I've been on this, no, ma'am. And nobody from the fire department has told me otherwise. And I have a great stock of it, I just don't get a lot of communication back.
Yes, go ahead.
Just for the council records, we are in the process of, we already have our FEIN number from Quinn's paperwork already, we're sending other paperwork to our 501(c)(3) that is in the process, in the process of being mailed. So just so you know, we are looking to change that so that more or less, it puts us as already incorporated, and that way the city goes to full responsibility without account for anything that goes on with it, so that they don't end up, you know, having any issues. We will do our own internal audits that will be part of our bylaws, and they're going into place, so we are prepared that issue is escaped.
But currently, currently, we still have the account, and it's still under the city's FEIN number at the bank, and it still should be audited. It's great that you guys are taking the actions to move forward, but this, an audit deals with what's already been done. So it needs to be done.
At this point in time, the fire department is part of the city in terms of its finances.
Exactly. So Mayor, without elevating too much deeper, there's been a lot of things said in the last two minutes that's completely inaccurate, can't happen, okay? I've set up corporations throughout the United States, I've set up 501(c)(3)'s throughout the United States, and I've done things in government as well, okay? When it comes to a department, the city council has to recognize it as a whatever. The city council of Kennedy, Texas, has never recognized this fire department as any. And I'll draw it back to 1932 so far. So they're not even recognized as a volunteer, they're not recognized as a hire, they're not recognized as a payer. This is something we are going to have to take up, so they can do what they need to do. But that is futuristic. Today, we have a bank account that has money in it, that I have seen some of the statements that are still lacking, some statements, and I've seen some things that cause me great concern. One of the things that gives me the right to stand here and say, great concern, is I hold a fraud examiner certification that was issued to me. So I'm the guy you hire to go behind your auditor to find fraud, and I see things that cause great concern. I want to get this taken care of, if the council so agrees, so that we can begin the process to put the fire department on the right track. This is all about getting them on the right track, getting them where they need to go. But we can't start without this, we have to have it in order first.
Any other questions from Mr. Lynn, or discussion? I don't see a downside to doing the audit. Does anybody else? And I think it's beneficial to both fire department and the city, as far as I'm concerned, at this point in time. Now, down the road, if they want to become a 501(c)(3), then we'll consider that when the moment comes, but at this point in time, I think, yeah, we need to get the books in order, so I would entertain a motion on this item, if there's no further discussion. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Lynn.
I'm going to make a motion that we take action in regard to increasing the scope of the city audit to include the financial audit of the fire department, separate books and a bank account held at Karnes County Bank under the city of Kennedy's FEIN number.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and second. Mr. Lynn, if you could call the rule?
Counsel Douglas?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Sayes?
Yes.
Counsel Brianna?
Abstain.
Counsel Nguyen?
Yes.
Four, one abstention.
Motion carries with four voting in favor with one abstention. Item number 12, consideration and possible action in regard to ordinance 21-01 annexing the city of Kennedy's recent acquisition of 118.23 acres located at the intersection of Business 181 and Highway 181, and moving the city of Kennedy's municipal borders to encompass the entirety of the 118.23 acres. The presenter for this item is City Manager Lynn.
Can we go ahead and have him open it first, ma'am?
Yes, can I get a motion? I'll make a motion to discuss Item number 12.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second, Mr. Lynn?
Okay, counsel, for those of you that are carryovers from last year, and then those of you that are new, we had an executive session whereby we had some discussion about some strategic movement that we wanted to do as a city. This ordinance in front of you tonight is the culmination of one of those things. Went after 118 acres, forgive my geography here, I'm going to say south of town, because I guess it'd be a little south of us. It's very strategic. It's right on the corner of what is what we call Escondido Road and Highway 181. This will extend our municipal borders all the way to the edge of that property, and then we automatically get our half-mile ETJ from there, which puts the prison very much realistically within our ETJ. This is about protecting our borders and protecting our community, and providing substantial areas so that we can grow as a municipality, both physically as far as land management and economically as well. There are some other things this land presents I cannot go into at this moment in time. First, we need to get with our city attorney and discuss this with her, if there are some potential... potential income things that we might have. So that is what this is all about. The, because we are a type A general law municipality, the local government code permits us the ability to move our ETJs once a year a half a mile in all directions. This is a total annexation of a piece of property that is 100% solely owned by the City of Kennedy that is undeveloped and that no potential persons will be inconvenienced. So this is not to negate our ability to move our ETJs. So once, if the council approves this, we will then sign, the mayor will sign the ordinance, we will take it to Kearns County, file up with them, that will give us a new footprint, and we will still be able to come back another day and move our ETJs in all directions a half a mile. This is how we protect ourselves from municipalities' persecution. The biggest thing about an ETJ and annexation is that it gives you the ability to raise revenues. When you buy property and you move, whatever's under that ground, for lack of a better word, whether it be an oil pipeline or a competitor's water pipeline, whether there are cable wires or electric cords running across that property, those are all viable fees that the city can possibly go out and help increase revenue as well. But it also enables you to have a development like that. Mr. Junis was talking, they're going to be needing land. We have land, okay? They're going to be wanting to put up roofs. We have places we need to put up roofs. So this is a very big win for the City of Kennedy. I appreciate the vision of the councilors that were involved in that decision-making, and I appreciate the patience of the new members of the governing body to get through this and to talk to me and learn about what's been going on and where we are in that. So that's basically, at this point, counsel, all I have as far as the presentation goes, unless you ought to do questions on this.
Any questions for Mr. Lynn on this item? I have one question. When was the property purchased?
This particular property?
Yes.
We finalized this transaction towards the end of December.
And the council voted to finalize it?
Okay, Mayor, if you don't mind, I want to be rude. Further down, if you look, we have an executive session, and we'll talk. All your questions. The executive session deals with real estate.
Okay.
Okay, some of the questions you're going to ask, I really can't answer because it was done in the executive session.
Okay. Is there any further questions from the council or discussion on this item at this time?
Can we wait to do this after the executive session?
No, not this.
It has nothing to do with what's going on in this executive session?
Yeah, this has nothing to do with the executive session. What the mayor was asking, a lot of that information is already for you guys to make.
And so if I understand this map correctly, everything within this red is going to be annexed?
I believe that's the whole city limits, isn't it?
Let me look at the map now so I can give you a.
The other stuff.
Yeah, so what is red will be the new city limit.
New city limits.
And this is the portion that we're talking about right here. These two plots down here on the very bottom is what we purchased. So that will be our new municipal borders. Everything that way is old. That's everything that's being added.
Yeah, just 118 acres.
Do we have an address of how far this goes out?
Uh, it's within our ETJ, so it's within a half a mile, it's within a half a mile. So you're looking at 692 is where our ETJ is probably where they're closest. Right now, 692 goes down to the colony unit.
Well, the reason, the reason I'm asking is it's hard to tell on this map, but the Kearns County Humane Society has since moved out, so is that included in this?
It's not against, that won't be on our municipal border. It may just be outside the new ETJ once we adopt this, but if we were to move our ETJ, they would move inside our ETJ.
Okay, because there's, there was issues in the past and, but then that could bring issues back and that, I just.
I would just say that it issues more with humans, and we got a whole group of people.
How many residents live within this section of land we're talking about annexing?
Zero.
So this is just.
You already live, open land.
Yeah.
It's all open land.
There is a 10-acre property that is right about 181 that it lets to it, but that's not being annexed because that's a person that we would have to go to them and ask them if they wanted to be annexed, or they would have to request to be annexed. But we're annexing, it's just wrong on the top line.
Gotcha, okay.
Any other questions or discussion on this item? If not, I would entertain a motion at this time.
Make a motion to take action in regard to item, ordinance number 21-01, annexing the City of Kennedy's recent acquisition of 118.23 acres located at the intersection of Business 181 and 181 and moving the City of Kennedy's municipal borders to encompass the entirety of the 118.23 acres.
But just to clarify, your action is to approve?
Approve it.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Lynn, if you can call the roll.
Counselor Douglas?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Sayes?
Yes.
Counselor Breones?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Motion carries, all in favor. Next item on the agenda is item number 13, consideration and possible action in regard to ordinance 21-02, ordering the May 1st, 2021, City of Kennedy general election for set purposes of electing city councilors from districts 1, 3, and 5 to establish the date, time, and place whereby the election and early voting shall be conducted and providing for other matters regarding the election. Presenter on this item is City Manager Lynn. Do we have a motion to discuss this item?
Make a motion to discuss item 13 on the agenda.
Do a motion as second, Mr. Lynn.
I'll take it.
Mr. Breones.
Okay, so I call the secretary today because I haven't done some secretary duties in a while since I. We do have to order our general election. I wanted to make sure that we could order it tonight instead of having to wait until February because we have so much we got to do. I wanted this off our plates, okay? So that's what we're doing, possibly tonight, is just ordering the election, and that's it.
Is there anything that will have to be modified in terms of COVID concerns in regards to this election? I know the last city election we postponed due to COVID concerns, but everything should go back to the way we used to do elections, same?
Everything's on track to be normal. When they did the elections in November, as you all know, they set up in here, it was all COVID safe and everything. I've already spoken to the other way these other departments, found any, they assured me, they're using the same current policy, using November, so we should be good.
Any questions from the council or discussion on this? Uh, no questions or further discussion. I would entertain a motion on item number 13.
I'll make a motion, take action in regard to ordinance 21-02, ordering the May 1st, 2021, City of Kennedy general elections for districts 1, 3, and 5 to establish date, time, place whereby the election and early voting shall be conducted and provided for other matters regarding to the election.
I'll second that.
And just to clarify, the, the action is to approve the ordinance. We have a motion and a second. Uh, Mr. Lynn, if you could call the roll.
Counselor Douglas?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Sayes?
Yes.
Counselor Breones?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
All voted in favor, motion carries. Item number 14, consideration and possible action in regards to filling one of two vacancies on the Parks and Recreation Board through appointing Ms. Melissa Travick-Solon, hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, to serve one, two-year term beginning on January 13th, 2021, and ending on January 12th, 2023. Presenter on this item is City Manager Lynn. If I could get a motion to discuss the item?
Make a motion to discuss item 14.
I'll second.
A motion as second, Mr. Lynn.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. So on this particular item, the council had set aside and we'd gone back and checked the ordinances in the map in the past, and appointed a bunch of people to the Parks and Recreation Board, and we had two people decide to resign, which elapsed from seven to five. Five is the minimum, seven is the most. Uh, we had one person interested in filling one of those two vacancies, we were going to appoint that person. However, it's come to my attention that the individual does not currently reside within city limits in the City of Kennedy, and there's already been some objections I've heard from current members that their bylaws, and this is all I've heard, it's been posted, that their bylaws state that you have to live within the City of Kennedy. I did interview the four Bs bylaws. The four Bs bylaws simply state in section 3.04 that you have to be a resident of the City of Kennedy at the time of appointment. So you can move after appointment, but when you're appointed, you have to be a resident. So I'm going to almost guess maybe that's the same way. I would make the recommendation on this item that the city council decides to set this aside until the March regular council meeting to give us time to do this hindsight back because of our limited knowledge of where a lot of things are. We can find some stuff, and we can better present this to the council so that you all can have more information to make this decision. So that would be my recommendation to the councils to set this aside until the March regular meeting.
Is there a possibility of putting notice in the newspaper or somewhere else that we're seeking positions for this board so that the community can be aware in case there's someone out there that we don't know personally that may be interested?
We can always do that, Mayor. Um, it's just that this one was a, hey, I want to do this, I want to help the City of Kennedy, I want to be there, I've got all this, you know, type thing, and, you know, usually most people come up, you want to grab them right away. So it's just unfortunate what we had discovered, so. What I would say to your question, Mayor, is if the council so pleases and moves this to the March meeting, that's what we will advertise, that way we can do everything kind of all together at that point because I would like to, I would only think it would be fair that the council do this particular person, you know, the same fair shots if they did step forward out of the shadows and raised their hand and say, hey, I volunteer, so.
Any questions or discussion on this item?
So you just need a motion to set this aside for the.
Right, I'm going to make a motion, and that will be what I'll call it.
Okay, then I'll make the motion to set this item aside until the March regular city council meeting?
Not second that.
We have a motion as second. Mr. Lynn, if you can call the roll.
Counselor Douglas?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Sayes?
Yes.
Counselor Breones?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
All in favor.
All voted in favor, motion carries. Item number 15, consideration and possible action in regard to creating and registering a logo for the City of Kennedy. This is a carryover item from the December 8th, 2020 meeting. Do I have a motion to discuss this item?
Make a motion to discuss item number 15.
And I'll second.
Do we have a motion as second? Uh, there's no presenter on this item. Uh, Mr. Lynn, do you have some information?
Okay, so, um, last week, we talked, uh, we talked about the legislative area, we often had a discussion about, um, city logo during our campaign, and, um, so there was someone, several someone that asked me to put this on the agenda, so I did. So that you all can discuss the city logos. I was also, of course, someone was to see to our city attorney who's present for this line item, in case you all have a little discussion, so I brought our city attorney down. She appeared to answer any questions for you guys. Uh, so here, I'm going to turn it forward to you, the council, to do whatever you want with this item, and talk to the city attorney or ask me any questions, yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Uh, if memory serves, the, it seems like the central question was why did the logo need to be changed? And that it had something to do with copyright?
Yeah, the, the logo that we had was not trademark nor copyrighted.
Um, I have a question for the, the city attorney. Is it necessary for the city to hold a trademark or copyright for their logo?
It is actually not necessary. Um, it's up to whatever entity holds a trademark or service mark to protect that trademark or service mark, so we would, you know, the city would want to, uh, ideally trademark the mark. But a trademark goes into effect just for use. Um, when you register it, that's an extra protection for the entity, and it also would, you know, when we would register it, it would guarantee that no one else were using that, uh, the trademark that the city is using in a way that might confuse people as to, uh, two different entities being connected in some way.
And that was also the other piece, there was other people that were using that same logo. That's how it all started.
It was one site.
But, but my question for the attorney is, and you probably don't, don't know this because I don't think you were the attorney at the time, was that this was brought up not because, because another city complained about it, it just was brought up, and the council at that time, they were in the, I, what I understand, they were under the impression that someone was filing against the City of Kennedy, and that's the reason why they changed it.
No, it wasn't filing, someone had brought up, someone had brought up, another area had brought up a concern that they were using that logo prior to us, and that's how it all started. I don't, I don't know who it actually was.
But if they actually filed a complaint, you know, to say that we want you to stop using our logo, we think that your logo is exactly our logo, because remember, the state of Texas belongs to all of us in Texas, and our old logo has it specifically with the star and the Kennedy in the big letters in it. So that identifies us as Kennedy.
Do you know if the other logo was registered?
Uh, I was public works director, and we didn't have it registered. But the point is this, that, that I brought up last month when we started discussing this, was that I understand the law that, you know, if someone files on us, but I don't think that was the case. I think it was just changed by certain individuals that wanted it changed. And we still, we still.
We didn't, we didn't, we actually didn't want to mess with it. And our city attorney at that time told us that it was prudent to get it done if you had someone else that was claiming to have that same logo.
But we never had.
We don't know who was. We were never told.
They didn't file them, but they, I don't, I don't know, but.
We didn't have to change the logo.
Okay.
We didn't have to change, that was just money that was spent for nothing.
I know there's a Facebook page that uses the old city logo. Is this, is that the case?
That's probably what they were talking about, but, but no one ever, no one ever complained about it.
But that'd be my question for the attorney then, is there any reason the city would have a problem with someone using the city's logo on their Facebook page?
Is it a personal Facebook?
No, it's a group.
It's a public. Public.
Uh, as long as, you know, it was an association, you know, with the city as a public forum, it would be okay to use the logo. I would say if the city does not retain any sort of control of the Facebook group, the Facebook group should not be using the city logo.
So then that would be the issue, if we tried to go back to the old logo, um, we'd have to reach out to that group and ask them to change the logo? Would that be the?
It would be the most prudent move, just to guard, um, the logo as well as to, you know, kind of safeguard against anyone assuming that the speech on that forum represented city's speech.
And if they opted not to remove the logo, there's nothing that we can do to make them remove the logo forever.
That's, that's, we, we copyright, we copyright, we're in control of it, right?
If we trademark it, we are in control, um, we would have.
That would be ours to.
Wait till she finishes.
I understand.
You know, once you trademark, you are still in charge of enforcing the trademark. So trademarking it would give us that extra layer of protection, but every single time it was in violation, it would still be up to the city, uh, to show, you know, that a violation had occurred.
I just don't, I, I, I feel that we should never have changed it. There was nothing wrong with it, and I think. There was nothing wrong with it, and I think it was changing the false pretenses. That's my personal opinion.
I have no personal opinion, but they, that don't have anything to do with what we're here to talk about. This is something that has an effect on the city. We did what the attorney told us that we should do, and just like she said, it was a prudent action to take, and we did it. But if you want to, if y'all want to move back to another one, this is a, three votes can change it back to what it is and put the city back in the same position it was in, if that's what you want to do. I mean.
I just.
Go ahead.
I have no personal ties, feelings, or emotions towards any one logo.
I don't either.
I would, I will say this, though. I don't think it's a smart decision personally to go and spend more money on something that has already been spent by a previous council vote. Because if we take that old logo, we go, we got to pay to trademark it, we're going to, I mean, we're going to spend more money and more money and more money, and that's my concern. Which, I mean, whichever logo it is, doesn't matter to me. I just don't think personally that spending more money on another logo is a critical issue for us. I understand what you're.
It's not a critical.
I was going to say, hold on, Justin. I was going to say, I agree with what Justin's saying about the logo and the cost. Okay, I'm sorry. James, I'm sorry, James. About the, about the logo and stuff, I hear where you're coming from. The thing is, when you're coming to spending money, question, my, it's going to Mr. Lynn, have we ordered any new logos to put on those trucks yet?
I haven't since I've been here.
And those new logos that we approved for the, or the, when we approved, there's no ones, the money isn't spent for those, for those logos. So technically, if we went back to the old logo, none of the trucks moved, although everything stays on the trucks.
But the truck, you still got to, you still got to, go ahead.
We're, we're in both directions either way because our paperwork has the new logo, the trucks and the equipment have the old.
And our business cards has the new logo.
The what?
The business cards have the new logo.
Letterhead, et cetera.
The letterhead has the new logo.
Mr. Lynn?
And it's already been trademarked.
Mr. Lynn?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so even though I haven't ordered anything, from what I understand from this item, the city was in the process of changing everything over, including all the trucks to the new logo, they just hadn't gotten all of the magnetic stickers in there. Okay, so it's kind of in limbo, but that was the direction the city was going prior to my arrival, if that helps.
But nothing's been ordered?
No, no, nothing else has been ordered. Just what's been changed has always been ordered, but there was a plan to order the rest of it.
And the business cards are not correct because our emails changed, I think.
Yeah, I mean.
I don't.
I don't want to discuss this all by myself.
I don't care which way y'all go. You can do whichever one you want. My only, my only challenge is that we said we wanted to get it trademarked, we went through the challenge of doing it, now we're going to go back and trademark what we already have. But I don't care, whichever way y'all want to go.
Do we have, I mean, can we get an estimated cost? You know, I mean, and the reason I say that is if it's going to cost, and I'm just throwing out an estimate because I have no idea, let's say it costs $5,000 to trademark the old logo, but it costs $800 to buy magnets. That's a big difference.
The trucks don't have one.
You know, well, I know, I'm just, it would be, for me, it would be an easier, it would be an easier decision to make, like, okay, we just spent $5,000, we just spent $800.
Can you peel it off and you put the new one over?
You know.
I know the process.
Ms. Gad, can you give us an idea of the cost to do a trademark?
To do a trademark and just do the actual application, it's around $80. And it pays.
I was way off.
You know, it can take up to several months, especially right now with the Secretary of State's Office, but, you know, they'll ask you for some verification and to apply it. It's more of an issue of time than expense.
So whatever y'all want to do?
May I ask the city council a question?
Yes, Mr. Lynn, go ahead.
Yeah, okay, so you said something that I think is very key there. You said the Secretary of State's Office. So would that therefore imply that the copyright protection exists on within the state of Texas and not nationwide, since it's not filed with the federal government?
Correct, it would be with the state of Texas. The federal government would be a separate staff.
Any further questions or discussion? It would, I mean, how expensive is it to change the logos on the trucks, and how many trucks are we talking about?
Mayor, it really, I'd have to really look into it to get an exact dollar amount, but really, just to say it like this, it's half a dozen one way, six another, in my opinion.
Kind of a wash either way.
Yeah, because, you know, if we stay with the new logo, I have to go out and buy the stuff to change everything to new logo. If we stay with the old logo, not only do I have to change what's been changed, I have to look at the old logos and see how good they are, and if I need to replace them anyway and order them to replace. So, you know, my personal opinion is, you know, Ms. Gad, is there any harm, here's the $26,000 question, is there any harm other than the fact that it might cause a little confusion to the city of Kennedy having both logos?
There's, I mean, the harm would be the idea of the confusion.
We don't want that.
And if you want, you know, anyone speaking on behalf of the city, you would want to make sure that everyone knew what the official logo was. Just if it worked the opposite way, you know, that you wouldn't want anyone kind of seeing both logos just being unofficial on behalf of the city. That's really the benefit of, you know, the trademark is just not having that confusion of who is authorized to be speaking on behalf of the city or, you know, what is operating on behalf of the city. We don't want that overlap of kind of different parties using it and maybe doing things that the city does not endorse or authorize. So that really is, that's the main risk. That's it. But it is hypothetical, we know, as a risk, as they usually are.
I do think it's important to be consistent with the logo, especially at now's kind of pivotal time with the new website under construction. So now it's just a matter of our choice. It basically boils down to preference. Cost-wise, it's about the same either way. So if, is there any other further discussion or questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Go ahead and make a motion that we return to our old logo and retain it, trademark it.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Lynn, if you can call the roll.
You just say into trademark, correct?
Yeah. Not to be trusted.
Counsel Douglas?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Saez?
Yes.
Counsel Breonis?
Yes.
Counsel Wain?
No.
Motion carries, four to one. Four in favor, one opposed. Item number 16, consideration and possible action in regard to establishing a date and time to conduct a workshop for the purpose of discussing items related to the proposed City of Kennedy Convention Center. The presenter on this item is City Manager Lynn. Do you have a motion to discuss the item?
Make a motion to discuss item 16.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Mr. Lynn?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so earlier when I got up here, I made a comment about some of the things we did. The other thing that we did that night in the executive session was we agreed to purchase some land off of Nottingham so that we could put up our convention center. So what we need to do now is we need to get a workshop set up this month so that we can begin looking at some of the old things that I have in the office from the old people who did some drawing to get an idea of what we want as a convention center, how we want it to look and that type of stuff, start to put this really in motion so we can break ground on that. As soon as they're breaking ground, I mean, so this will all come, be primarily funded from the hot funds. So I can tell you that the January 18th is off the table, so the house closed, and I will be out of the city on January 25th. Other than that, I am open, and it's a, y'all, y'all's.
Does anybody have a personal preference?
Are you talking this month?
Yes.
I'll meet when y'all are.
Ms. Gad, how urgent is it? Can it, can it be in our February meeting, or is that too late?
So just to kind of set the stage for some things here, I will do, we'll do whatever council wants, okay? The plan was to have a workshop this month for the convention center, and then on the February agenda, I'm going to put this ordinance on there to do a workshop for this ordinance so that we can address this particular ordinance that is, the subject of much discussion at a workshop in February. Trying to knock some of these things off one at a time instead of burdening the council with things to do all at once. So if it doesn't work for anybody, you know, figure out a date.
Can you give us a date, and then we can tell you?
What about January 26th? That's a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday.
It gives us two weeks to do some research on it. Does anybody have a problem with January 26th?
I think that'd give the community more time as well, you know, to plan to be here if they'd like to be here for that.
And that's just for that one?
Yeah, it's just a workshop. It's just where we can actually have a formal discussion about it and talk about it. We don't make any votes, we don't make any decisions, we just talk about it. It's the legal way that we are allowed to join together to have a conversation. That's what a workshop is for us.
Can we make sure that whatever day we pick that we put it on the website is, sorry, the Facebook page as soon as possible, just to make sure that, you know, if any community members wanted to be there for that, that they can be.
Yeah, so that it runs in the bank.
Perfect.
Once we, yeah, so that it gets to running in the bank.
Yeah, because I know there's a lot of people in Kennedy that, you know, are excited for a convention center that's been a long time coming, so.
Okay, y'all want to do it at 6 o'clock one more time, or just y'all want to 6 o'clock?
Any further discussion or questions on this item? Do we need a motion, Mr. Lynn?
We do.
Are we entertaining a motion on this?
I'll make a motion that we schedule a workshop for the purpose of discussing items related to the proposed City of Kennedy Convention Center for January 26th at 6:00 p.m.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Lynn, if you can call the roll.
Counsel Douglas?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Saez?
Yes.
Counsel Breonis?
Yes.
Counsel Wain?
Yes.
All in favor?
All voted in favor, motion carries. Item number 17, close, yes, sir?
I need to ask the attorney a few questions.
Go ahead.
Would it be your fault or his main to have to tell the mayor something procedurally for what we're fixing to do for the residents?
No.
Okay.
For those in the sentences that are still with us this evening, it's a little different than the way we used, the way things used to be done. You can, you can remain here during the closed session, and we're going to adjourn to the council chambers, or you, or you're free to leave. It's your choice. So item number 17, closed session. City council will meet in closed session in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code under section 551.072, deliberations about real property. Item A, consideration and possible action in regards to purchase of real property. Are we entertaining a motion at this time?
I make a motion to go to closed session.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Lynn, if you can call the roll.
Counsel Douglas?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Saez?
Yes.
Counsel Breonis?
Yes.
Counsel Wain?
Yes.
Okay. What time is it, Mayor?
7:44.
Seven.
We're reconvening back into open session for item number 18. City council reconvened in open session, at which time action on a matter discussed in closed session may be considered. A, purchase of real property, action to be taken regarding items discussed in executive Can I get a motion to discuss the item?
We need a motion to come back in open session.
Make a motion to come back in open session.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. You're reconvening to open session. Mr. Lynn, if you'll call the roll.
Counsel Douglas?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Saez?
Yes.
Counsel Breonis?
Yes.
Counsel Wain?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to discuss the item.
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into negotiations concerning certain real properties for which the city has budgeted funds available.
I'll second that.
Motion and second. Mr. Lynn, if you'll call the roll.
Counsel Douglas?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Saez?
Yes.
Counsel Breonis?
Yes.
Counsel Wain?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion carries. Before we move to item number 19, Mr. Lynn, bear with me for just a moment. There were two items that I'd like to, I would direct you to include on the next agenda for our February meeting. First is consideration and possible action in regard to the billing dispute between the city of Kennedy and David Brodsky. And the other item is consideration and possible action in regard to the procedure by which agenda items are placed on the agenda.
You can't direct me on whether the council can request. And we, that situation with the water guy may be resolved, I think.
Well, I just, Ms. Gad sent an email to me earlier today. Ms. Gad, is what Mr. Lynn said correct, that we cannot request agenda items at this time?
You can request them after.
Yes, that's the key. Request, you're saying direct. You as the mayor can't direct.
Is there magic language that needs to be used for this?
The code says request, but.
Request, okay. Can I reword my request?
Please do.
Okay. I would like to request an item be placed on the agenda for our February meeting for consideration and possible action in regards to billing dispute between the city of Kennedy and David Brodsky. And I would like to also request an item to be placed on the agenda for the February meeting for consideration and possible action in regard to the procedure by which agenda items are requested.
Okay, I want to ask one clarifying thing about that last item. Since we've already stated that that's part of an ordinance that the council is already going to take up, do you still want to put it under and burden the council that to do it twice?
Yes, I would like to discuss rewriting the ordinance.
Right, you know, I already told you, it's on the agenda to do that, have a workshop, that ordinance.
And we can't discuss rewriting the ordinance in session because the power is supposed to be written, has to be already there for us to approve. That's why we have the workshops, so we can talk about stuff that we're not going to take a vote on, but we have the workshop so that everybody can say what they need to say and everything is put in. And now you have a, a line item that's on your agenda that can be handled by the council and voted on. But if we have something that we discuss during council, we can't vote on it. It's a discussion only. It has to be an actual agenda item that we're going to vote on. We don't know what we're going to do yet. We got to have that discussion, and then it's got to be written for us to have, for us to approve.
Is that correct, Ms. Gad?
It would be written as an ordinance for you guys to approve.
Okay, and that's best done in a workshop?
The discussion, the discussion would be best done in a workshop, just so that we could then know how to, you know, what you all want drafted within the ordinance. And then once that was nailed down, the ordinance would be what the city has put on the agenda as an. the agenda as an item and then how to do it.
Could we do back to back workshops, the one that's two weeks from today?
Well, here's the thing, Mayor, okay? If the council so desires, we can. However, this particular item, after looking at the ordinance, I have this feeling, this is going to be a two, two and a half hour workshop just on that ordinance, okay? Because you have, the council and you are all going to have to get together to how you want it read, what you want read, you know, and we're going to have lots of discussion on it.
So it'd be better on a separate day?
Yes, that's why I said, I'll put, like I did for the convention center, I'll put that on the agenda in February so they can select a date like we did for that. And then we'll do this by itself in February and then once we arrive at a, this is what we want, we'll type it up, bring it to council, we go to our enrollment form.
Okay. Considering that, then I'll withdraw my request, the second request, since we will be, we have a workshop in the plans for February addressing the same matter, so.
Yes.
Okay, then the next item on the agenda is to adjourn. If I could get a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Call the roll, Mr. Lynn, for adjourn.
Counsel Douglas?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Sayes?
Yes.
Counsel Breonis?
Yes.
Counsel Wain?
Yes.
Be the adjourn. I don't think there's any visitors left, but thank you for those who came and helped out, appreciate it.